Good afternoon and welcome to the special meeting of the Arts and Culture Commission. It is October 31st, 2013. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioners, here.
Kevanian?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Sherekin is absent. Chairperson, Dever?
Here.
The agenda for the October 31st meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside City Hall on October 25th, 2013.
Next item?
Item two, consent items at A approval of meeting minutes from September 19th, 2013.
Comments or motion? Steven?
I'll make a motion to accept.
And I'll second it.
Roll call?
Commissioners, here.
Yes.
Kevanian?
I'm staying.
Lee?
Yes.
Sherekin is absent. Chairperson, Dever?
Yes.
Next item?
Item three, introductions and presentations at A, Library, Arts and Culture Events, presented by Chuck Wyke, Community Relations Manager.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Dever, Commissioners, City Staff. I'm Chuck Wyke, Library, Community Relations Manager. Unless on Halloween today, I'm his evil shifter twin. I've got a few slides to show you, mostly about things that have gone on that relate to the arts specifically. We, at the Library, Arts and Culture Department, participated in the Big Draw L.A. It's actually a nationwide drawing event, so for a couple of weeks, we just encourage people to walk into all of our locations, pick up a crayon or a marker and start drawing. We had stations where you could draw, and we've got a lot of great big pictures. We started off with an outdoor chalk event for little kids. There's some of the things we've done, those are teens, I believe, and we've got some more panels up, the stuff's on display, it really looks good, a variety of pictures. We even had a comic book put together demonstration. We had a number of artists who work in Warners and Nickelodeon and so forth, and they came in for a couple of really good community workshops where they walked parents, teens, kids through comic book making. We now have a 40-page cartoon with a real nice beginning, middle, and end that I hope to share with you on PDF. It's called Touch and Go: Adventures at the Library. I'll have to bring one of those in for you. In November, starting the 5th of November, this bear, and of course Glendale's rather notorious for its bear population or visitors, this bear is called Otto the Book Bear. His story is, he lives in a book, and late at night he comes out and walks around. It's written by a British author named Katie Clemmenson, and what we're going to do is take the pages of the book, put them on big placards up in Montrose on Honolulu, and you'll be able to view the entire story from beginning to end. You start at Verdugo, walk down Honolulu on the north side to the library, and read the book. Great for kids, of course, but then we've got a couple of events at the library, you can name your favorite bear, you can, you know, there's a lot of bear shenanigans at the Montrose Library, and that starts on the 5th of November, runs the entire month, rain or shine, free of the public, it's open day and night. Our One Book One Glendale program is very popular, not just for adults but for children or younger adults. This year, we have a local author, Kathleen Odell, she's written a mystery called The Aviary. It's spooky, and she's coming to the library in the middle of the month. I'm going to end here with some Brand Library information. This is what the front steps look like now, we've got some much-needed banisters or the railings going up to the front. You can see some really nice lighting, and even a sign that by golly says Brand Library Art Galleries. That's the entrance, basically the entrance to the entire library is going to be in this end here. Some of the inside shots again, beautiful. There's so much they've found and restored there, it's a wonderful-looking facility, but I think we're going to be better off as a functioning library also. Final shot. I want to remind you to tell your friends and neighbors, your artist friends, curators, that submissions for the 2014 exhibitions are due the middle of November. Is it the 15th? 15th of November. You can find the information online, you can call at any library site, and we'll gladly get that information to you. We've received quite a few submissions, so we're expecting a lot to kind of come in the last week or so. More art and music news, the Associates of Brand Library are going to hold an art and music sale Saturday, November 16. If you're a member of the Associates or the Friends of the Library, you get in at 9:00 a.m., general public gets in at 10:00, and it runs till 4:00 o'clock. This is in our auditorium. We are expecting a lot of people, and they're pricing books the last few weeks, it's going to be great. A little more information about that. That's about it for the library. I've given you a handout for Brand Library, a handout that's our November adult and teen events, it includes also the Story Walk, and I've given you the newsletters for the Friends of the Library and the Associates of Brand Library. Happy Halloween.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Next item?
Next item is item four, Oral Communications. Discussion is limited to items not on this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. The Commission may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The Commission may refer the matter to City Staff for investigation and report.
And I have one card for DeKimbold, if you would come to the front, please.
I'd be here again. Chairman Dever, Commissioners, and Annette, by the way, the Glendale Art Association wishes you much happiness as you set off on your merry journey. I just have a quick announcement, on December 15th, we're having a Holiday Salon Art Festival in Eagle Rock at the Center for Fine Arts, Center for?
Center for the Arts, just for the Arts.
Center for the Arts, Eagle Rock, C-F-A-E-R. It's going to be in the afternoon, 1:00 to 5:00. We will be there four days, and we'll have a closing reception where artists can come in and demonstrate. It should be very nice, we're going to have a string quartet, food, beverages, and all kinds of media, probably have a few neon artists again with us. So we'll send you announcements by email, and look forward to seeing you. The other thing is, we're preparing a proposal for the RFP responses for the Brand Library, and think it's a great idea, and appreciate that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you very much, looking forward to it.
Great.
Next item?
Item five, Miss Business Agenda, A, Action Items at one, Review and Approve Performance Series Guidelines.
In September, we presented the Arts and Culture Commission's two-year work plan to the City Council, and they approved the two-year work plan with some recommendations and recommended changes to the work plan and some of the programming. One of those programs was the Performance Series at Brand Library. The Council requested that the Commission consider expanding the program citywide to encourage expanding existing programming that's going on, as well as to expand beyond just music and include all types of performances. And staff has looked at the original proposal in the budget, and we've been able to come up with a program proposal that can encompass both what the Commission wanted, as well as some of the City Council's recommendations, given the budget that we had. So I'll quickly just go over what the program is. Essentially, the goal of the program is to provide a free cultural asset to residents and visitors. Of course, we'd like to support existing artists and performers in our community, but we also want to attract new artists and performers. We want people to come to our city and to really see all the cultural opportunities that we have. As mentioned, one of the first focus areas was Brand Library and Art Center, and we had focused on the reopening year to encourage people and activity up at Brand. The other focus area is to expand existing performances in the city, but to bring in some new programs, and these would serve more of like pop-up performances, you know, through the two-year period of our work plan, anywhere in the city as long as it's publicly accessible. For the performances, the Commission would fund between 500 and 1,000 per artist or performance group, up to 15 grants per focus area, and we could do that with a budget of $20,000, and it can be a really robust public performance program. Just to give you some more details of what it would look like up at Brand Library and Art Center, the performances would be scheduled in spring and summer to coincide with the opening. We're looking at the calendar at Brand Library and Art Center, so it would fit into some of the other programming that's happening there. We want them to be complementary, and these would take place Sunday afternoons in the springtime, and then Friday evening in June, July, and we're looking at maybe August months, and this would be, we're hoping, a weekly basis. People would know that they could come and enjoy free music and public performances in the plaza area. Just to give you an idea of how many people can be accommodated on the plaza, it's about 75 to 100 people, but based on amplification, you know, people in the park could even set up a picnic and enjoy it sitting in the grassy area, so we anticipate that it's going to really bring a lot of people up there, and it'll really create some excitement in the opening year. The second is citywide. These could be scheduled, you know, I'm very ambitious saying it can start as early as January, but just depending on how quickly this gets approved, but it would, these could take place anywhere from the date that we actually select the artists through June 2015, which is the span of our work plan. This would be to encourage existing free public performances. There are a lot of organizations and artist groups that do, you know, free music performances during lunchtime. We want to encourage that activity to continue, we want to help them expand that. But we also want to encourage artists and performance groups to think creatively of public spaces, whether it's publicly owned or it's privately owned public space, and to do performances there. So this could include, you know, drama, opera, some sort of performance art to actual music, and we're open to proposals. Again, they are going to all be free and publicly accessible, and that's one of the responsibilities from the artist and the performer. Of course, we know Brand Library and Art Center Plaza meets those requirements, so what we're asking of submittals or proposals for other areas, that the artists and the performer ensure that the space is publicly accessible for the community, that they have to be free. The artists and performers are also going to be responsible for helping market and publicizing these performances through their appropriate networks. Of course, the city's going to undertake some of that responsibility too, but it's really about a partnership to maximize the number of people that come and enjoy this. And I'm sure everyone's favorite topic is insurance requirements. The selected artists and performers will need to comply, but it's very simple, and it's not going to be as complicated as other processes, and this is something that could be paid through the stipend that they are given, through the 500 or 1,000. Doing initial outreach, a lot of artists and artist groups that already do public performances have the necessary insurance, they've done this type of work before, so it's not going to be a shock, but I just want to put it out there so that people know that it is something that we will require, but of course, we're happy to work with them to make sure that everything's settled. So the selection process for this, because we quickly want to make selections, we're going to review proposals, and as of right now, you know, staff's recommendation is to have the selection be made by Arts and Culture Commission and Brand Library and Art Center staff, so we can quickly review those proposals, make sure whatever proposal it is coincides with some of the programming that's happening at Brand Library, but also looking at overall what's happening at the city to make sure we're scheduling performances, that we can discuss that. Obviously, we're going to be looking at the quality of art or the performance, whether it's appropriate for our community, and of course, we want to encourage a mix of performance styles, artists, and programming opportunities, and again, the site selection access, so we want to ensure that any locations that are proposed beyond Brand Library and Art Center are safe and they are accessible publicly. And that concludes the overview. The recommendation is to approve the guidelines and application as presented. The next step would be to present this to Council for their review, and as soon as it's approved, then we can proceed to issuing the open call for proposals and to make the selection. Staff's goal is to make selections and finalize dates, at least for Brand Library, by early January, since Brand Library and Art Center is scheduled to open in the springtime. We'd really like to have the year's worth of events already scheduled and planned and in a calendar, so people know what to expect. So it is an ambitious schedule, but I know we can do it, especially depending on the staff that we have reviewing it.
Question? Now, is this going to be the Art and Culture Commission's kind of activity, or is it Brands, or it's a joint? And staff, do we have enough people to be able to schedule all these events and calendar them and et cetera, the way it's being done already with Brand?
No, this is going to be an Arts and Culture Commission program. It's just in partnership with the Brand Library and Art Center, that's the one part, but it is an Arts and Culture Commission project.
And the staff of the Brand Library are going to do the scheduling, or it's going to be our staff?
Your staff is going to be working with the Brand Library and Art Center staff to just make sure that, you know, if we are scheduling something at Brand, it doesn't overlap with another event that's already scheduled there. It's mostly just the logistics to make sure that we're scheduling events at appropriate times of the year, things that require a lot of community interaction. We don't want to schedule when there might be rain outside, for example, so it's just mostly logistics at this point.
Next question. The scope and the texture, that means whatever is being selected, is it going to be, is it going to come and reported to the Commission, or it's going to be taken care of only by the staff?
No, we will provide a report back to the Commission.
Thank you.
If the Commission chooses to have a report back, we're happy to do that.
Absolutely. If it's Art and Culture Commission event, naturally it needs to be reported to the Commission. If it's not, then that's a different story.
Other comments, questions?
First of all, I'm very happy to see this finally come in front of us. I applaud staff and City Council for making this a swift decision and bringing it back to us. In terms of the amount of money, let's say, for example, if a, let's say, a performance group, for example, proposes some kind of, let's say, multi-concert series, would they then therefore, let's say, it's a three-concert series, right, and if they get 1,000 per performance group, let's say, for example, then they would get 3,000? Is that what it is? Is that a possibility? Is that?
It is a possibility. Depending on the proposals we get, we want to, as mentioned, we want to get as much diversity as possible. There are some performance groups that could do three performances with $1,000, so that's something that we're looking at. We'd like to award as many different artists and performers as possible. So my recommendation would be, any interested artists or artist groups is to stay within those budgets and not go beyond it, because we want to award as many different funds that we can.
And if I might ask, the way that I read it as well, you can confirm, is that if a group is established enough to be having multiple series, that this might be one funder of that series, that it maybe helps get them started or puts them over the top in terms of their budget?
And a secondary question, what if you have, let's say, one group that, let's say, for example, a performance for them, if their group is large enough, I'm thinking classical music, obviously, if they're playing in a chamber music, let's say, size, and they have, let's say, 15 players, and that would require a lot more than $1,000 to pay anybody, quite frankly, let's say, they came up with an idea of performing even just one concert for, let's say, $10,000, would that be out of the question?
I would say yes, because this is the first year that we're doing this program. We want to have as many, you know, as I said, we want to be able to fund up to 15 different groups and performances, so, you know, maybe in future years when we have a lot more discretionary funding, that's a possibility, but in this first year, we want to get as many as 30 different performances.
So basically, the first year is going to be more introducing artists, young artists in the community and et cetera, rather than having a famous group or a group that is a kind of a better-known, because to have a group of, let's say, a chamber music, something that they are quite well-known to the community, that would require that amount of money. So maybe that way, not to disappoint, we could say that the first year or the first plan or the two years, we are going to go with the introductory kind of performances, and then in the future, to plan for bigger or better-known artists.
I don't think we have to put that type of limit, because there are bigger-name performers that have performed at other cities, that are on the LA County Commission's, Arts Commission's list, that do performances at other cities, that pay out the same amount that we do. So we're encouraging, you know, new and emerging artists, but we definitely want some of those established artists to be able to come in. So I think we want to leave it open, but we want to give out as many different, I don't want to call it a grant, but we want to fund as many different performances as possible. So if there's a proposal for, you know, $10,000, you know, we're likely not going to fund that. We'd much rather do 10 $1,000 performances, just to be able to have more activity.
My initial thought with that is that with the amount of money, sometimes there has to be a quality, a sacrifice of quality. That may or may not be the case, however, that is an issue in the back of my mind. Secondly, is there going to be any kind of preferential treatment that we give to Glendale local artists?
We haven't put any, you know, percentages like we did in some of our other RFPs. If the Commission wishes, we can say 20%, which is consistent with some of our other proposals, that we can make that a threshold that will ensure that 20% of the artists selected are Glendale-based artists. If that is something that the Commission would like to include, I can make that change.
Is that something you're putting on the floor there?
Well, indirectly, yes. I'm not entirely sure if I want, if 20% is the right number, 50% or some, it's something arbitrary for me. I don't know if I can, in my mind, think of any kind of percent that would make me, let's say, quote-unquote, "happy" with anything, but it is something that I, because if we're going to, if we're going to bring local artists, our emphasis with, I think, this whole work plan has been local, 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 and then if we, and what triggered that was the fact that you mentioned, you know, that there's artists on the LA, you know, Commission's, you know, list of things, yeah, but where the focus, I would think is that it is Glendale, that is the focus. So it's not about 100% either, but that's the way I see it. I think that it is about the local, it's about, it is about funding the local artists.
I might say, the LA County, it's the County Commission, so I think being on that list doesn't preclude that they are or not from Glendale.
There are Glendale artists that are on that list, so it's just that, once, you know, an artist, if they're on that list, they've gone through this process before, it just gives us an idea, have they ever worked with the city before, have they ever gone through a process, do they understand what they're getting into, as opposed to a first-time artist? It's not to say that somebody who's not on that list is precluded, it just gives us an idea of if they have experience working in this type of an environment, and we want to obviously have a balance. If you'd like, under the selection process, we can add some language, you know, preference may be given to Glendale artists, if you're, if you don't want to give a specific percentage, or we, can we do that? On the guidelines, we can say, you know, preference may be given to Glendale artists of all things equal, or we'll come up with a specific language to add in there.
I think I would be very happy with that exact wording, instead of giving it a specific percentage, just to say that there will be preferential treatment given to Glendale local artists. And as a matter of fact, quite frankly, as a performer, I actually never worked with the city before, so what I would also like to just mention, and this does not have to go into this, but to make it an enjoyable experience for the artist, because working with the city is not what artists do well. We don't understand the bureaucracy of it all, and we do forget things like, oh, you know, is the stair leading up to the stage going to be three inches, you know, per stair? We don't think of things in that regard. So just as a side note, make this an enjoyable process for the artists, please.
We're trying to make it enjoyable for everybody involved, even the bureaucrats.
Right. Well, that wasn't, you know, a direct hit on anybody, but, you know, I just, you know, I think it's necessary just for me to even just say that.
Before, you might have more comments, but I just wanted to query on the preference component, so I heard that from Commissioner Kevanian, and I just want to find out if there's consensus on having the generalized preference for Glendale artists as part of the selection criteria that we're looking at.
Yeah, I would like to say that I really like the idea of preference, because basically we are representing the artists in our community, and we are there to support them. Preference does not limit us, but it also shows our focus, because meanwhile, we would like to have artists from elsewhere, because we want to bring other people to City of Glendale as well. We want to have performances that people, visitors come, and they visit our restaurants, they come to our stores, they do a lot of different, you know, as far as the economic support of what happens in the city, we need outsiders here as well, but it sounds very good to have preferential treatment and preference to Glendale artists, because that's why we are here, to support them.
Let me throw this out there, just to ask the question, so if you had, and this isn't the actual math of it, but if you had 10 available slots, and you had 10 artists from Glendale, then 10 artists from outside of Glendale that were equally appropriate, then it would all go to Glendale, and are you okay with that? Because I'm also hearing as in bringing in artists from the outside would be important, so that'd be more like a 50-50%, or do you just want to keep it as a preference in general?
Then we'll go with the quality of what is being presented, kind of. Then we would have kind of a choice, but we would have more tendency or more inclination towards the Glendale, but nonetheless, we are not going to exclude, even though there are 10 Glendale artists and 10 outside, we are not going to exclude the outside artists as well. It's very hard to say, to put a percentage, I know that. If you don't put any percentage, it's hard to decide, but you know, more or less, when a decision is being made, well, maybe 40, 60%, maybe, and in some cases, it could be reversed, based on the quality of what we are offering to our community, because our aim is also to educate our community as well, by the presentations that we are choosing or allowing to have in our community.
Mr. Grant, do you?
Well, Chair Dever and members, there are many ways to do this, I mean, you can even assign points during the evaluation, you know, when you have quality, you know, zero to five points. Certainly, you know, points can be given to a Glendale performer or musician, and you can do it that way, there's many ways to do it, so that way, you know, in the long run, you can evaluate and select local ones.
So just to clarify, so if we are leaving it, I just want to make sure there's consensus on it, so if we're leaving it, just as a preference may be given as part of the criteria, then we could decide later exactly what that criteria will be in terms of scoring?
Yes, yes. Because what I hear is, we definitely want to encourage and nurture our existing and our local artists, but we don't want to preclude artists from outside of our city, because we want to encourage people to come, so that's why I think, you know, we can say preference may be given to Glendale artists, and then when it comes to the scoring process, we'll work with Mr. Grant to come up with what that is, so that if we have equal numbers, that we're, again, fair and we're meeting the Commission's wishes.
So it's kind of like a rubrics. There would be a rubrics on evaluating how things are going to be chosen, so there must be a bigger number for those who are local, as far as local, but when the other items come in, the other ones can kind of balance it out, huh? Is that, is that how basically we are planning to do it?
Again, you'll be working with staff, but... Again, you'll be working with staff, but, I mean, and again, that is one way of doing it, and assigning a point value. Again, you know, the commission, you know, we can come back and we can discuss, you know, how you want to evaluate this, and staff can, you know, present a report to you.
Just to mention, because I know that Parks and Rec used to do that, when they have for their parks, different artwork chosen, there's a rubric created already, which we could go back to it, or we can modify it, which gives kind of a balance of what they are representing and their location, and what community they're representing also was very famous, so we could use those two as well. Anyhow, just to mention that it is, we have some of those already created by our curators.
Is this something that the commission wants staff to bring back, or can staff take direction from the commission and develop something and begin implementation?
I would like to...
Before we answer that question, I want to go to Commissioner Lee, had an input.
There's terminology being used right now, one, it says, "may be given preference," or "will be given preference." I think I would prefer "will be given preference" instead of "maybe," because I think the terminology you mentioned said "maybe," and Chair Dever said "maybe."
I think it was "will."
Well, when you say "will be," for example, Chair Dever brought up the example, if we have 10 slots, and we have 10 proposals from Glendale artists and 10 from outside of Glendale, then all 10 of those slots would be given to the Glendale artists if we say preference will be given to Glendale artists, but if we say "may be given," then staff can determine that appropriate number, whether it's 50-50, 60-40, or if we decide all 10 goes to the local, to local artists. So, "may be given" gives us that flexibility, so we're not limited to 20%, 50%, or 100%.
Well, in that case, I would prefer if it comes to the commission, again, on the, whatever rubrics is being presented or whatever is being decided, because I do believe that it is our job to make sure that we are very much into how things are being presented and how things are being decided. Personally, that's my choice.
Commissioner Kevanian?
Is there going to be any commissioner input in the process before it comes to the commission for finalizing it? Is that something that's out of the question, is it something we've thought about, I mean?
It's not, it's absolutely not out of the question of commission, the, one of the reasons, you know, was not listed in the report is, the commission, there's going to be a different commissioner reviewing, you know, for five other program proposals, and given the quick turnaround for this program, you know, I thought this was the easiest and the least amount of money, this could be handled by staff, but if a commissioner wants to be involved in the selection process, we can absolutely include a commissioner, but I, again, I want to remind that for this program, this is something that, again, even though council wanted us to be able to have quickly implemented, so we can include in the calendar for Brand Library and Art Center, if a commissioner wants to be involved, I would recommend that whoever that commissioner is, serves as a representative of the commission and helps us develop that rubric, and then we begin implementation, rather than coming back to the commission, but if the commission wants to go over what that rubric is, we can bring that back, but it's going to give us a very, very short turnaround time.
And actually, that's exactly why, instead of having to bring it back to the commission for us to review it again, and then, you know, reinvent the wheel, essentially, I think, I'm suggesting to my colleagues as well, that we do put, one of us volunteers to be, you know, on that panel, that selection panel, and represent the commission, so that it doesn't have, so then when it comes back to us, it's basically just read through here the results, and then it's done, so there's no, there's no real input anymore.
So, let me ask the question, so is it how we prepare the rubrics that one of the commissioners would be part of, or part of the selection of the 10 and 10-whatever number?
Right, the selection.
And that may include a rubric, or it may not, it's, they're part of the process, so that we don't have to stall up by micromanaging it at this level.
Exactly, so if a commissioner is, volunteers were selected, then that commissioner would work with staff to develop that criteria even more, because, you know, anytime you do a selection, you know, it's appropriate to have some sort of rubric that we fill out, so the commissioner would work with staff to develop that and make the selection of the performers and the artists.
And I have a procedural question, if we were to go this route and have somebody volunteer, do, can we do that in this, right, okay?
My question is, if we are selecting for different performances, each one of us is kind of inclined or has, is trained or has kind of a special affinity with certain form of performances, so we are not all equally well-balanced in that area, that's why I was thinking that when we want to choose or select different presentations, it would have been, it's hard to say if one of us could represent all the different form of performances that are going to be selected. So, to be more precise, to do a better job, to represent the community, to represent the council members who have appointed, somehow, I don't know how we could come up with a right answer for that. I don't have the answer, but I do want to make sure, let's say, if something is in the musical arena, assumingly, of course, the best choice, the person who would be selecting would be Commissioner Kevanian, for example, you know, or different areas, so how are we going to do that? What do we envision, what are our rights, how does it work?
I think what staff's recommendation to address that is, unfortunately, you know, not every commissioner can be involved at every step of the process, and it's necessarily something that's even required of you, it's usually, the burden falls on staff, but what we've done is to ensure that the commission is involved in the decision-making process, what staff is incorporating in each one of these selection processes, whether, for all of these programs, is that a commissioner is voted to be part of that selection process, so every single one of our projects is going to have a different commissioner, and of course, each commissioner, you know, has different preferences, but that's what adds variety to the selection, and, you know, it adds, it adds variety into the selection, so I believe that that's a, that's a good way to proceed, because if we were to go through and bring things back to the commission, we would never get to the implementation part, and I know we're all anxious to get to implementation, so that's the recommendation, is for every single project, and for consultant selection, there's going to be a commissioner involved in that decision process, so you are going to be representing the commission's interests, and you will be able to make that decision.
So, I would like that clarification, that in case, let's say, if there are different performances, based on the performances, the selection within each different kind of performances presented, a different commissioner could participate one in that event, correct?
No, I think for each project, so for this, for this public performances, there would be one commissioner, so whether this commissioner is voting on a music performance, theater, drama, opera, that one commissioner is going to make decisions for this particular project. For the Art in Vacant Store Friends consultant project, that's a different commissioner helping in that selection process, because that way, it'll help things move quickly, and you'll still have the opportunity to participate in that decision-making process.
I have to see how it works, somehow, I'm not very comfortable with it, but I, maybe it's the best way to do, it's just, I want to make sure that the quality choice, because we are representing also the quality choice of what is being decided for the, any event that happens in the area of art and culture. I know that staff, their job is to implement it, to take care of it, to go through the procedures, but what is being decided, I want to be a little bit more careful in what we are selecting and who is being selected, but that has to go with whatever my colleagues eventually want to decide on.
So, if, in order to keep the process moving forward, it needs to go to, we need to approve something here, and it needs to go to council, but, so that's going to take at least a month and a half or so, there's nothing that keeps us, let's say, from a December meeting, you can still issue a call, and we can figure out who from the commission might be participating with staff in the selection, which we could do in, say, December, correct?
Correct, correct, so as quickly as we're able to take these items to the council, we can, we don't have to have the rubric defined during the call for artists, so we do have time, and just as a reminder, you know, I feel like, you know, I'm constantly harping, just to remind that the council doesn't want the commission involved in programming, it's, again, the larger policy decision, so decisions that are made here, so when it comes down to, like, specifics, you know, does this program happen on this day, and all of that, the council doesn't want the commission involved in that, they want staff to focus on that, so the commission can work on the policy side of this programming, so my recommendation would be, I can include the addition of the preference may be given to Glendale artists under the selection process, and at the next month's meeting, we can decide which commissioner is going to sit in on the selection process for, you know, at that point, it'll be four different RFPs or call-for-artists process, so you can start to think about which project interests you, and then we'll go from there.
And I just want to ensure that, find out if there are other comments with regard to the content of what we're approving, and Commissioner Kevanian, you had a?
I was simply going to approve that, I was going to make a motion, excuse me, I wish I could just approve it, I'd like to make a motion with the changes that staff just mentioned.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioners, Sir Hovanesian?
Upstain.
Kevanian?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Tariqian Sapsen. Chairperson Dever?
Yes. And next item, please.
5A2, review and approve temporary exhibitions in public spaces RFP.
As promised, this is the scope of work and a draft of the request for proposals for another one of the priority projects for the commission, and this is temporary exhibitions in public spaces. So, you recall that Art in Vacant Store Friends program is designed to turn vacant spaces into temporary galleries or installations or display windows, this program is about, you know, creating temporary art exhibitions to enliven public spaces, again, this could be city-owned, you know, public spaces, a plaza, for example, at City Hall, or a privately-owned plaza that is open and publicly accessible. This is a program, is very flexible, we're looking for the right consultant to come in and help, you know, create some vision or theme to it, but, you know, it's open to, you know, placing existing loaned or even commissioned site-specific sculptures or other temporary artworks for public view. The goal would be to rotate these exhibitions and spaces throughout the program near, and the consultant will be given a budget of $60,000, and that includes everything from, you know, if they're doing any marketing, to insurance, to the consultant fees, and to even commissioning any artworks. We are asking for a lot out of our consultant, and just to reiterate, a lot of the requirements for all of these are consistent, I've made sure that any consultant we hire, we're going through a similar selection process, we're requiring similar information, just so there isn't confusion, and if anybody's interested in submitting, then they know exactly what to expect the city. The consultant will be responsible for developing a brand identity and program concept, you know, we definitely want to be able to create a program that's specific to Glendale, and we'd like to get proposals from consultants. The consultant will also be responsible for doing the call for artists and selecting artists and curating, and also finding locations and spaces. Of course, city staff will be happy to work with the consultant to identify some city-owned public spaces that are suitable for this type of program, but we want the consultant to get creative with other types of spaces throughout the city, and they will also be responsible for the exhibition installation setup and cleanup, administrating, administering and managing the program, the program budget, changing out and rotating the exhibitions, as well as promoting and marketing the programs and other ongoing communications. We really want, if the program, for example, takes place in the downtown area, we'd love for this consultant to be able to work with a consultant that's, for example, working on the Art in Vacant Store Friends program, as well as with the Downtown Glendale Association, so that we create some synergy, and, you know, city staff will work to ensure that, and of course, we will want the consultant to provide reports to the commission, you know, when they issue a call for artists and make selections, you know, how many artists submitted a proposal, how many did they select, how many are Glendale artists, how many locations are they looking at, how many people came to, for example, an event, if they do host an event, so we want this information, of course, it helps us, you know, keep tabs on the program, but it also lets us know how much activity is created out of these different programs, you know, art as an economic development tool is something important to the council, and these reports will help us get that information. The review and evaluation is very similar to the one from last month that we presented for Art in Vacant Store Friends program, we're looking at two different focus areas, of course, the firm's qualifications and experience, we want somebody who's not only worked with similar scope of work, but they've been successful at it, they know how to manage temporary installations in public spaces, they understand the process, that they also understand marketing and promotion, we want anybody who's doing a program in Glendale to be able to tell everybody about it, and to be able to sell the idea of Glendale as an arts and cultural destination. We also want, you know, quality submittals, we want to, somebody who's responsible, who's going to be able to manage this program for the commission in a great way, and that they understand what we're requiring of them. And just to reiterate, a commissioner will be involved in the selection of the consultant, and we will select that commissioner next month, if there are no, you know, changes, again, staff recommends the commission approve the scope of work, the draft RFP is presented, and the next step will be to take it to council for their approval before we issue the RFP.
Commissioner Lee?
The only thing I'm not too happy with right now is, I've seen everything that we're going to be spending money on is dealing with consultants. I mean, I have utmost confidence in staff that they should be able to manage a lot of these products in-house, I mean, I know it's time-consuming, but maybe bring on, with this type of funding, to bring on more staffing, to be able to do it in-house, and the reason why I have a preference for that is because it makes the event or functions an actual city function, it's done by city staff, it's not done by an outside consultant, somebody bringing in new ideas, staff, I think, have the capability to see and to absorb everything that needs to be done, and that would be my preference, because then we're not outsourcing everything out, having somebody else come in and tell our community, hey, these are the better locations, instead of somebody who's in-house already, who's already familiar with the territory, and can get more ideas or brainstorm and come up with better ideas than an outside consultant can come up with. That's my first, you know, inclination to this, because, like I said, every one of these projects all deal with, you know, big bucks for consultants, in a sense, you know, I'd prefer if we can generate it more toward in-house, to be able to fund these projects, that's what my preference would be.
Well, I appreciate your confidence in staff to be able to manage these, but when we were discussing our work plan, I think one of the discussions we had was staff's workload, given the robust programming that you want, staff can't, you know, I cannot manage and oversee all aspects of every single project, and that was one of the drawbacks, is if we wanted more programming, then it was going to have to be, you know, consultant-managed, of course, in partnership and collaboration with city staff, I want you all to be confident, whether we hire a consultant, whatever consultant we hire, it is still going to be a city program, and it will be an Arts and Culture Commission program, we're not just going to be handing over a check and having a consultant come up with a vision, they're going to be working with the commission and staff, they're just going to be doing a lot of the work that staff doesn't have the capacity to do at this point, in future years, it might change, but in this first year, given the number of programs and projects you want to do, we can't do it in-house, so the consultant will work with me and for the commission to be able to deliver that vision.
I might add to that, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the funding for this, these programs through the Urban Art Fund cannot be utilized to have additional staff to make it possible, so we don't have the funding for additional staff hours to work it, but I, you know, just from the other end, too, sometimes using the word consultant, I think, has a certain connotation, but I think if we think about it as artists, arts organizations, cultural organizations...
organizations that do this as part of their, what they do, and even consultants that come from that world that just have maybe more contacts and a different perspective than our internal staff might have, and so that working together, we might, in the end, have something that we wouldn't have thought about internally.
And consultant is a very bureaucratic word, so I apologize. So, you know, the consultant that's hired for this could be an art organization. It could be a group of artists that's able to do this. So it's a matter of them managing and being able to do this work. So when we say consultant, you know, I want you to, it's somebody that's an expert in this specific field, but they're going to be working to develop a commission project or a program.
Because the terminology, then, I would like, would be collaboration. We find a partner, not a consultant, and then that makes a difference. Because right now, we're just hiring somebody to get all this information for us. We're not doing a joint project. And if we're looking at doing a joint project, then that's what I would prefer, because, for example, you know, brand associates, any of the organizations we can partner up with, because then what they will be putting into the table is their time and effort, too, will help fund the project. But they will be putting in to make it a more successful event or a product. Is it?
I have a question actually for Mr. Grant. In terms of terminology, because any respondent would have to be under a contract with the city. I don't know what the terminology would be for that, but is there different terminology that can be utilized besides consultant, or is that standard city language for the contract?
Standard language for the contract, but I mean, we could look into, I mean, you know, partnership collaborator, I mean, you know, contract with somebody who's essentially still the function of a consultant, but has a different name or title to it. So I mean, that is a possibility. We could work with that. But generally, the standard in the city would be a consultant, whether, you know, it's an architect, engineer, or in this case, somebody who's an expert in bringing artists to the community to fill the storefronts.
So if in the RFP, if we wanted soft, more inclusive language that reflected more of the vision of it, we could do something like requesting proposals for collaborators or partners, maybe in quotations consultant, something like that, that would then reflect what would be in the ultimate contract. Just throwing it out there. I don't know what other commissioners' thoughts are about.
What about collaborating consulting firm, or, because again, if it shows that the consulting firm is not going to do everything on their own, it is going to be in collaboration. Would that work? If it's a collaborating consulting firm or collaborating consultant, that would kind of identify that the will and wish of the city and the commission is implemented?
We can look into, if that's the commission's wish. I'm just looking through where we've, I think, in the opening line, we say that we're accepting proposals from qualified art installation consultant teams. We can, you know, art installation collaborative partnership or something. I mean, we can add, unless we're required to get specific language, if not, then when, before sending this to the council, then I can come up with the right terminology. But we would, again, use quotation consultant, just so people understand that we are, that they are going to be retained. It's not just, they are going to have to go through the contractual process. So I think we can find a good medium between collaborative partner and consultant, and just make it absolutely clear that they're going to be partnering and collaborating as a consultant with the commission.
I do believe, you know, what is his concern, or maybe mine is the same, or maybe you are thinking differently. The fact is that whatever is the product of the consultant, the city council is going to hold both the commissioners, the commission, and the staff responsible for it. So because we are going to be the ones for the choice of the selecting group and for what is being the performance, that's why that collaboration should be not only, or whatever it's going to be used, should be not only a word, but it should be a function that should be maintained in whatever is being decided. That's how I see it.
Ms. Commissioner Lee?
As I recall, the city council asked us to work more on policy than versus running functions, because technically, we're running these functions. By doing a collaboration or a partnership, we're not, we're indirectly running it, we're funding it versus running it.
Are you talking yourself out of your recommendation?
Well, along the same lines. It's along the same lines.
Actually, it's just the opposite, from what I understand, correct?
I just heard you, what I just heard was that if we're focusing more on it being a partnership or collaboration, then we are then becoming a co-programmer as opposed to a sponsor of a program, which is our role.
Correct. More of a sponsorship part, but in that same essence, being the sponsor, a collaboration is still, a sponsor can be in collaboration, not straight donations or--
It's all frankly semantics. I mean, I think we've been pretty clear about what the intention of the program is, what the role of the commission is.
We were just looking, one of the next RFP says assist in the event management for this. I think what we can say, accepting proposals from qualified art installation consultant teams to assist in the management of, assisting means that they're working for the commission with staff to be able to produce that. So I can add that word, and then we can continue to, and then we can keep the language as is, because then it means that they're working with us.
Good job, Ms. Grant.
I'm seeing nodding heads. I think we're in consensus.
Sounds good. Very good. Thank you.
Other comments on the content of what we're approving?
I will make a motion to approve with the change in language.
A second?
Roll call.
Commissioners, Terhoe Vanessien?
Yes.
Kevanian?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Tariqin's absent. Chairperson, Dever?
Yes.
Next item.
5A3, review and approve event management RFP.
Okay, so the last item for you to look at tonight is to retain an event management firm to help the city research, develop, and plan a signature art event. This is something that both the commission and the council is very excited about, is to bring some sort of a cultural and arts-related event and help build it into something that can, you know, happen on an annual basis. Again, the goal would be to create some sort of, to create a cultural destination for the city residents and visitors. I think it was important for the council that we help continue brand Glendale's Art and Entertainment District, and a commission-funded program or an event would be able to do that. The budget for this is $50,000, so the event management firm would really have to make that stretch out for, to cover a lot of responsibilities. They will be responsible for event marketing. That's a very, very important part of developing a signature art event, retaining event talent. So whether it's finding artists or musicians or performers to be able to do, they're going to be responsible for not only finding that talent, but securing them, negotiating the fees for it. Also, event research and development is key, is to identify the right time of year to be able to plan this event where it's not going to interfere with other events that are happening in the city or in the region, to develop a theme, a concept that's unique to Glendale, that fits into, to the city's goal, and something that our residents will be proud of to attend, but also to attract visitors from throughout Los Angeles. And then, of course, the most important part is management. There's a lot of logistics, you know, the RFP spells out, I think, 15 different items that they'll need to look at through, like securing insurance, to making sure that there's, you know, evacuation, you know, avenues to porta-potties and all those things. And this is something that an event management firm will be able to do, including general event oversight, is coordinating with residents, businesses, to make sure that there's that ongoing communication. Something else that we're requiring the event management firm, or encouraging them to do, is to develop event sponsorship and fundraising. So although the city is budgeting $50,000, the consultant is encouraged to go find, whether it's in-kind or monetary sponsors, to be able to increase that budget, to develop a larger, much larger event. And that's something that we can discuss further with a consultant, is when we're finalizing that agreement, is, you know, how much does this, the city retain to be able to help pay for future years' events? But the idea is to bring in the right firm to do the right work, so that they, we don't make this a one-time event that doesn't go anywhere. It's really to develop a great event that can grow every year. The review and evaluation of the proposals is consistent with the other two that you just saw. Again, we're looking for a top-notch firm that's done this before, they've been successful at it, they know what they're doing, they know how to work with the community, they understand how to outreach to our local businesses, to residents, as well as local artists and performers, but they understand things on a global perspective. They can develop and do that research, which is really important, and that they also know how to promote that, the event, and get the word out there. And we're looking for quality submittals, people who understand, again, what we're expecting of them to do, to make sure that they are creative in their proposal and their narrative, that they're just not going to give us something that they've submitted to every other city. We want something unique to Glendale. We are all excited. I think everyone's been waiting for something like this in our community. We definitely want to get a unique proposal and something that's creative and exciting. And that's a quick overview. Again, if you have any changes, I'm happy to incorporate them. If not, I recommend that you approve the scope of work and the draft RFP.
Commissioner Kevanian?
I will move the approval for the event managing firm RFP.
And I'll second it.
Roll call.
Commissioners, Terhoe Vanessien?
Yes.
Kevanian?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Tariqin's absent. Chairperson, Dever?
Yes.
Next item.
Item six, commission staff comments.
Oh, I can start very quickly. So last meeting, I was absent, and in case you are all wondering, I was on the East Coast looking for grad schools. I will probably be going to Connecticut as of next fall. Yeah, I have not quite decided where, but Yale is one of my options, and University of Hartford, but I'm leaning to University of Hartford, actually. So that's all I wanted to say. That's why I wasn't here last night.
Very exciting.
Lot of fun.
Other comments?
Just, you know, a little thing. There are different activities and functions that have participated, but what highlights was the Brand Associates event, which was called Glendale Collects, which was at the house of Jean Simone. It was phenomenal. It was a fundraiser, and the event was so classy. It was so beautiful, so artful, so inspiring, that I was talking to my colleagues about it, and I said that, you know, it's still, it is in my, I close my eyes, I see the house, I see the candles, I see the artwork, I hear the music, and the wonderful conversation of the wonderful people who were there to support the event. And there are many people who came there that night. So again, thank you to Glendale Arts, sorry, to the Brand Associates for the wonderful function that they put together. So since Terry Dever, our chair, is also the vice president of the group, I wanted to extend my gratitude for the wonderful work and the wonderful function that was put together. Thank you.
Staff, the only thing I'm going to, I will add is just as a reminder that the Glendale Youth Alliance Art Exhibit Fundraiser is happening on November 7, Thursday, at the Glendale Forest Lawn Museum. And with that, next item.
Item seven, written communications.
And we have none, that I'm aware of. Next, oh, and we are then therefore adjourned. Happy Halloween to everybody. Enjoy the evening.
Happy safe Halloween.